Good afternoon and welcome to the special meeting of the Nacogdoches City Council, September 11, 2024. And Blaine, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Yes, could you bow your head? Dear only Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for everything you've done for us, even waking us up this morning. Lord, we just want to say thank you for that. A brand-new day, one we've never seen before, Lord, one we'll never see again. So let us do that which is in your will, not our will. Your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Let this council just guide ourselves in a way that you would have us to be guided. Let us ask you for anything that we do not understand, and let your wisdom prevail. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let's stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
So, do we have any open forum?
No.
No? Okay. So, we go to our regular agenda item, which is item 4A. City council will receive staff recommendations and public input on our 2024 rate study. Matthew Garrett, would you, from NewGen, is going to educate us.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Rhonda. All right. Well, good afternoon, council members. Pleasure to be here. Matthew Garrett at NewGen Strategies and Solutions. Been in front of this council before. We worked with you some years ago on water wastewater and solid waste rates. The scope that we're working under is water wastewater and solid waste. Believe you may have seen that recently on an agenda. We don't have the solid waste rates to share. Today, we're focusing on water and wastewater. Okay? In your packet, I believe you have our presentation, so we'll go through that at this point. So, very quickly, our agenda. We'll talk about our objectives, what we hope to accomplish, some of the key rate drivers, those things that are causing us to need to change rates and adjust the way we set our revenues. The projected revenue requirements really are a forecast of need, right? The revenue requirement means the costs that need to be borne by rates. So we're going to talk about what's baked in the cake, as it were. What cost have we assumed, driven by a lot of capital? We'll talk a little bit about your customer usage, but we won't go deep there. We'll talk then about the projected rates, the rate changes, and how that affects the typical rate payer. Lastly, we'll look at how you compare to your regional comparators, cities around you and like you, that were given to us as your comparison set. Other than that, of course, the next steps will be related to the fiscal year. Not present today is Kim Bostic. She's a senior manager with our firm. She led most of the effort on water and wastewater. So a quick shout-out to her and her team. They did most of the detail work on this, and I wish she was here presenting with me, but she had another engagement. Generally, in a utility fund, and you probably talk a lot about your different funds, it's that time of year for budget. But this is an enterprise fund. We'd like for the revenues and expenses to be equal, or have more revenues than expenses. The theory is, this is one of the few operations as an enterprise fund that should be a business-like approach, where the revenues cover at least what we're spending, if not more. Lastly, we, not lastly, additionally, we need reserves. So we say we have to plan for a rainy day. You operate a number of different balances. We'll talk about the rainy day for the operating. You also have some capital reserves that we are making use of. Lastly, because you're setting aside dollars for capital repair and replacement, it means you understand this is a system that's not once and done, any more than your home is. Things are going to need repair and patching to keep going. All the more in this system, because we're providing a public good. Your charge as a board of this business is to provide safe and reliable water service. If you've seen some headlines, there's some cities out there that didn't do such a good job. I think this community's doing a good job, but you also have some big expenses coming up. And so those are the items that will be in your five-year horizon, and we can start tackling those in fiscal '25 with some rate adjustments. Those key rate drivers include $96 million of capital improvement projects. I believe council's been briefed on that, so I'm not going deep on project by project. Really wouldn't be qualified to do so, since I'm not an engineer. Additionally, you recently sold off a portion of your system, Central Heights. So if anything, you've lost connections, and we don't anticipate a lot of growth in connections. So an important assumption here is that there's no growth forecasted. So the same rate payers for the next five years are going to have to pay for inflation plus this capital. Okay? Lastly, your previous rate adjustment was October 2020. So we've been sitting on the current rates for a while. Inflation alone, we're behind by better than 10%, right? Probably more in the magnitude of 13 to 15, depending on which metric you use. So those are the things that have led us to today, to October rates, or whenever they're effective as set by council, needing to change in this community. Touching on the capital plan briefly, again, I said I'd gloss over it. Most of your capital demands are in the sewer services that you see. Those are represented by the green bar. Your total capital ranges from that 10.9 low in '26 up to the coming year at 23, almost $24 million of need. But because you've seen these capital plans, I won't spend a lot of time here, unless you have any questions. Hearing none, we've talked about now the big need. So that middle row that says total capital projects, it's a white band about six rows down. Those correlate to what you just saw, but this slide is really giving you the funding plan, not just what do we need, how are we going to get there? So with a focus on '25, if you'll follow down with me, we anticipate putting aside $3.65 million of current revenues. Those are dollars received from rate payers next year, and we will be funding our capital reserve with those dollars. Additionally, we have .8, or $800,000, these are all in millions, that we're going to actually cash fund from the capital reserves towards a project. We do have some proceeds from ARPA. Those are one-time monies. We'll spend the two and a half million, and those are gone after that. We do anticipate needing about 17 million in new bonds for the utility. You have other options. We have other cash reserves that could be tapped. But working with your staff, we've approached this with sort of a balanced approach of spending down what we have, but not depleting to zero. So we can spend some more time there if you'd like. That said, you see new debt is calculated below. That 17 million equates to about 1.3 million in annual principal and interest payments. You'll see that cumulative PNI, we issue in '25, we start paying in '26. What we issue in '26 is about $4 million. That principal and interest gets added on in the next year, so on and so forth. And by the time we're done with the five-year plan, our debt's going to be about $5 million every year to fund. But we are facing a $96 million hurdle. We are cash-funding some of it. We're also funding out of our current rates towards that capital reserve. So that's kind of the capital structure as spelled out. Any questions about the use or the assumptions made to get here? None yet? All right. So what does that mean? And forgive this, there was a bit of a formatting snafu, I think, when we copied over a presentation today before the meeting. Some of the slides didn't come over, and the format is different. So that line to the left that runs through the title wasn't on purpose. I do apologize. That said, this is effectively your dashboard. These are our key performance indicators. The top one is pretty simple. You have revenues expressed as a line. You have expenses as a bar. If our revenues are below the bar, we're losing money at a faster rate than we can stand. Debt service coverage is the bottom left. Ultimately, we're okay. We don't have a lot of debt today if we don't change rates, but by the end of our planning horizon, we'll miss the mark and be under our debt service coverage threshold. Worst of all, our reserve requirement, we end up in the red, and we can't do that. So if there was a burning platform, it's this. We don't have enough cash to not change rates and fund what we need to fund for the next five years. Okay? Key importance here, the reserve requirement for the operating fund is set at 25%. And so you'll see that as the driving factor on the projected rates. So the rates as proposed include about a 5.4% increase to the various rates. You'll see the variance year-over-year going into '25. It's only $1.08 per month for the typical residential user for water, $1.37 for wastewater, with a total variance of less than 3, actually 2.45, to be precise, in the coming year. So a pretty small change. What's also important to note is that this assumption, the plan works if we change rates every year. You can't just set it and forget it for another five and fund what we said we're going to fund, because the math doesn't work. So all of these variables are interdependent. We have a spend assumption, and we have a revenue assumption. And so this five-year plan, I don't think you'll be asked to adopt a rate plan or an ordinance that sets rates in 2028, but just know, this council and future councils will need to take rate action to continue this plan. Does that make sense? Okay. All right. So all in, we're funding quite a bit. We are spending down some of our reserves, and we think we're doing so in a prudent manner. Our annual, our year-over-year change for the monthly normal average resident is $3 or less for the next five years. I have one client that has no rate increase. I presented this year. You are the next lowest. So I think this is a really good story. I know we're talking about big dollars. We're talking about an increase, and I cannot trivialize someone else's $3. But as my client set goes, this is the lowest increase per month on a resident I think that I've had, other than the people with no rate increase. So, good story, I believe. Same thing, we said, let's look at that dashboard. Things aren't okay. Let's check the dials again. With the rates that we have put in, our revenues are at or better than our expenses. We do have a slight reduction, because we are planning to spend down some of our operating reserve. So we look at the next dial. Debt service coverage is fine, right? We have more than enough to cover our needs. Lastly, you'll see we kind of, skin of our teeth, achieve our reserve requirement. That is a purposeful reduction of about $2 million, so that we can minimize rate changes and stay at our 25% reserve requirement. That's not a have-to. That's a decision, and the financial policy of 25% sets a low bar for me. What I don't have is a next target higher bar. So should the council want to have a higher operating reserve, that's something you could take up in your financial policy-setting meetings. But that's why we're able to accommodate the spin-down, small rate increases, and still meet the revenue requirements that you have. Okay? Any questions so far? All right. Again, forgive the line strike-through bill. That wasn't on purpose. But as comparisons go, you're already low. The lower Nacogdoches is the current rate for 4,000 gallons of water consumption and wastewater assumed flow. These bills are today's dollars, today's rates. Many of these communities are going to be taking rate action in the near term. So you're low today. You're low against today's rates after the increase for '25, and that's what you see as proposed. You are likely going to have some of your comparators increase, which may even further your position on the low side of the scale. So all around, most of my charts and slides are very favorable, from what I can tell. Low rates compared to your comparator group, low rate changes per year, and you're able to fund what you need to fund, because you've had some capital reserves, because we have an operating reserve. Things that are allowing us to do this now, it's worth continuing those practices, right? We don't want to spend every dollar, perhaps, but we're able to do these things now, because we set some money aside before. Lastly, council, of course, wants your feedback today. You'll have to determine the appropriate path forward, of course. Hopefully, you take into account this study and other direction from staff or recommendations. That said, we do expect council will need to take some rate action, some rate action in '25 for rates to be effective in October 2024.
Matthew?
Yes?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
I'll try to keep my agujacks to a minimum, since we're talking about math. Just, if you go back one slide?
Yes, sir.
Because I see this ring off, and he signs off with "howdy," so I know what it is. I had a kid that went there. So every, most everyone else is probably a comparator until you get to, the reason San Marcos, I'm assuming, is used, because they have the profile of also being a college town and not a, I know that they have, with the aquifers and that neck of the woods, or not having any woods, and also supplying, sorry, Brad, I, I wish I would have been around in the era you were working in Hollywood, because I would have wanted to be on Hollywood Squares.
Oh, why?
But I once ate at a buffet next to Soupy Sales as a kid. I'm not joking. So, in all, in all seriousness, in some ways, it isn't a comparator, having been in the whole country. In other ways, it is. I do think that they kind of fall in a major metro, but I did want to maybe point that out. They pro, I'm assuming y'all were probably asked to look at them back originally in the scope, because of that college component. So, they are and they aren't, but, you know, I've even talked about that when we looked at comparisons on PD and FIRE, and what's a peer and what's a near peer or not. But yes and no, a little bit different situation, definitely a lot different rainfall, or users getting attached to their system.
Good point. Different user group, more transient or more turnover. You have a university that's paying for your water as well. Not everyone has that behemoth on the utility bill roll, as it were. So, yeah, some of these comparators aren't neighbors, but maybe more similar in usage patterns or customer patterns. All right? Other questions, perhaps, on comparators or the rate impacts? No? Well, I blew through that compared to the visit I had with your CNAT group, a great group of people, very interested. So I'm glad that you've assembled that team. So high praise to them for their effort and questions. Yeah, very polite and thought-provoking as well. So enjoyed that. Back to the path forward, we do think you need some rate action going forward. We do have this pretty modest rate increase. You saw $2.50 and some change, perhaps, next year on the typical rate payer that you'll probably see in a proposed ordinance along with budget. And then after that, I think I'm to questions and discussion. So if you were saving a question through those very few slides?
I have a question.
Absolutely. Thought you might.
How, because we have sometimes drought, sometimes floods?
Yes, sir.
Events. Does that, what does that do to all this?
Sure. So-
And I'm pretty naive about it, so.
Oh, fair enough. So you're in East Texas to begin with, and so your average usage here for a typical resident's pretty low for outdoor water, right? We have a relatively flat usage pattern compared to my communities in central Texas, less shade. I think you've come from there. And you may see a typical September usage of 20,000 gallons, 25,000 gallons or higher, for a typical resident that's letting the kids play in the sprinkler, keeping the water, you know, the grass green, and kids who come from college, whatever the usage is. Here, our usage is very low. So if most of our usage is, you know, care and feeding of the children, washing, bathing ourselves, indoor water consumption, you're not going to have as much variability. Now, your outdoor water consumption does give you some ebb and flow. People are watering here. We see usage that's outdoors. It's just not at such a rate that I'd be concerned. So I would say you have more revenue stability in that regard. I would also say that generally, you have a healthy reserve balance. And so that's how utilities manage for the ebb and flow. In addition to the seasonal ebb and flow, we also have the budgeting ebb and flow. I pointed out to your CNAT group, you start a budget October 1, and then immediately, you have a good month, and then your revenues start to wane, because you get into your worst revenue months for a water utility, right? And then you pick back up, and you finish strong in the last four months, and everything gets right. And we think it's bad, it's bad, it's bad, and then we're good again. So if you were a standalone business, you would need a bigger reserve, because you wouldn't have another kitty of money to pull if you ever needed from a cash flow standpoint. That 25% gives you 90 days approximately, and that's going to handle a little bit ebb and flow on the cash. You'll make payroll without having to dip into another fund, hopefully. And I did express to your CNAT group, though it's not in their purview, that it may be good for this city to look at its financial policies and establish 25% as the floor, and perhaps draw a dotted line on a target that's higher. Now, that's just my opinion. There are a lot of professionals behind me that do this. They may say 25 is enough or too much. But that's how I manage ebb and flow, is having enough reserve for the rainy days, when people aren't watering, or a storm day, when no one's here and businesses are closed, right?
One, one thing I'd add, let me open with this one, Brad. I've seen fire, and I've seen rain.
10 bucks.
The, in, in the hill country, we did analysis on this. So in Leander, circa 2015, when the higher-density hardy plank houses were starting to come in on smaller lots, they all came also with irrigation systems. Prior to that, they didn't have the, that. Now they're actually hitting historic drought in that region. You've had, if you actually look at the connection, the ratio of connections versus being added to all those cities, versus to their inability to expand their, their systems fast enough, some of those curves, and I know you've looked at them, you, you almost need to go in some places to a flat-out moratorium, I think, or for periods. I think we even saw Conroe recently went to one, because their issue's not water. They can't build the infrastructure fast enough to get it there. In our case, I don't believe we, as a proportion to our total city, the number of, and I don't know, in Case may know, the total number of, of irrigation connections we have, because we have separate, many of them, how many?
About 1,600 relative to 15,000 or so?
Yeah. So it's, yeah, maybe 10%. It's not a terrible number. I think if we, let's say if we had a new neighborhood, a greenfield neighborhood versus infill development, you might see more of those connections theoretically than if it, if infill on the existing grid or existing neighborhoods where there's opportunities to do that with that 200-some lots that we have. You probably wouldn't see that many irrigation systems. A greenfield development of 100, 200 homes, possibly. But we would have to do likely some other utility water and sewer connections to even make some of those 200-home neighborhoods happen, probably through some kind of incentive program that wouldn't break the bank. But I'm not sure if Case has anything to add to that. But our, I don't think our peaks and valleys are as high and low, and God knows, if you did water here every week, you might have to mow three times a week.
Case, did you want to add anything?
I think Rick covered it honestly. I don't, I can't think of too much else to add to that.
I did want to ask both Rick and Case, if you would just give a very, very brief overview about all of the major expenditures we're going to have to make in water and sewer, just, just to, you know, for the people who might be listening, because, I mean, there are huge things we're going to have to correct and, and do that the council has already looked at before, but just to give a brief.
Rick, I do have a supplemental slide.
Sure. Sorry, somebody was talking already.
Thanks, Todd.
Yeah, let's, let's, between Todd being quick-thinking and, and Case having put these together.
Yeah.
Case, did you want to kind of go to a brick summary, kind of by water to wastewater to even some of the?
Just major. I'm just talking, I mean, we all know we have really serious water needs and sewer needs, and in this whole, this oldest city in Texas. We are the first incorporated, and the, we have old lines, so.
Sure. Happy to do that. So basically, in general, water and wastewater, it's kind of like I was telling the CNAT committee earlier, we've got, we've got long-range planning that we, we try to do, which is, you know, the later years of the four to five, year four to five of the five-year CIP, and then into the six to 10-year range. But a lot of the, a lot of the CIP itself is going to be things that we're having to react to. And so those are basically components at the plants that either have failed and we're now trying to correct, or they're, they are failing, or we see in the near term that we're going to have to take some action to, you know, rehabilitate some components, things of that nature, which are usually pretty high-dollar. Clarifiers out at the wastewater plant, belt press buildings, things like that, can, can easily be over a million dollars per each line item. So, and then same thing on the water side. We, we've programmed in certain projects that are pre-planned, such as water well rehabilitation. We try to do every year or two. Filters out at the surface water plant, we try to rehabilitate at least one of those every year or two. And so some of those are planned efforts. A lot of them, again, are going to be reactionary. Some of the longer-range plans that we have on the sewer side also include several tens of millions towards relocating two of our major water trunk mains through the center of town along Bonita Creek and Lanana Creek. Those are going to, those are going to comprise, you know, 30% or so of that whole, you know, 90 million. So several of these line items are very, very expensive. And so I'm not sure if that speaks to everything you wanted to address, but that's kind of the way we have programmed a lot of these monies.
Thank you so much. I think that's really helpful, to give everybody, you know, an overview of some of the major needs. And you did a great job on the spot. Appreciate it. And I had one other question. Mr. Beverley, you've been sending us articles. Do you want to just speak to all the articles and things happening around the state? I think that was really helpful to us, and other people might like to.
And I, I think Matthew can probably concur in this. The, the inflationary impact, the growth, the growth of Texas is withstood, not only in central Texas, but even in DFW and Houston, which has been almost exponential, if I can use words, Cougar High that, that large, is, quite honestly, infrastructure needs are outstripping everyone's ability to build them fast enough. At the same time, you've, you have the inflationary effect on top of the growth. Most cities are, many cities that are kind of considered halos up in DFW, many of the suburbs that you thought would be in great shape, are even considering double-digit rate increases, and they're adopting the maximum property tax amounts, and suppressing for the first times, and as long as I can remember, or at least probably going back to the oil crash days, although most of those cities weren't what they are in '86, '87. They may not, they may have had 2,000 people. Now they have 200. They're actually doing minimalistic raises, if any. So when they were running out ahead of us here in their good years, now they're really challenged. And I think our overall position, if you even look at, I believe Mayor last night mentioned it, if you look at our sales tax right now compared to our comparators, if you look across the board, we're not in a bad position. And I think that also, the timing, I'd rather be, I need to be lucky and not smart, since I'm not the other, the timing of UT and SFA, I-69, what, what Elliott Electric is doing, all of the above, Eaton, you couldn't ask for a better crisscrossing of the good lines, because most others, their lines are crossing, and it's almost at an unsustainable nexus that they're at. And so it's another, we're blessed.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Chad, you have a question there? You look like you're, no?
I asked all, I asked all of my questions during the CNAT meeting.
I'm just frankly amazed, because everything I had heard was that they're going to raise your water rates by 50% or something, and it was going to be hard on the poorest people here in town. And what I'm understanding is it's $2.45 or something. So that's absorbable. So, thank you. That's pretty amazing work.
Sure. And I can't take credit.
Rick did that.
Yeah, perfect. That's my answer. And-
And Case.
Yeah.
And Case.
Additionally, I mentioned it before. I didn't give you specifics. We have, what's it, $28 million of capital reserve dollars, and we're eating into that by about 14 million over the five years. So we're using the cash we've set aside for the designated use. We're eating into our operating reserve by about 2 million. That was the drawdown I showed you on the operating reserve. So we're balancing the objectives of minimizing rate increases while doing the infrastructure repairs we need, while meeting financial policies. And if we ever put money aside and gave it a name, we're using it for the right name, and we're not getting it to zero. So the praise goes to those that set money aside some years ago, to your current staff for having policies and to think through this. Big shout-out, obviously, to your city manager, also Todd, who's filling in, Big Shoes, who's helped a lot in this. Also, Case on the line, Jason, and No Doubt BD wrestled with the UB. So thank you to your team. So thank you to your team. But I did want to say, there are some reasons you're able to do minimal increases while you're climbing this big hill. It's because we had reserves ready to help. So, good job doing that, I would say, keep doing that. Wouldn't get down to day zero with your reserves because we see they help smooth out our rate impacts to our customers.
Any other discussion, any other questions? Okay. And I, I have to say, Mr. Garrett, you answered a lot of my questions a year or two ago when I was asking you at TML. So appreciated that.
Enjoyed that time, thank you.
Including impact on, on people who have fewer resources and, and his answer after, is it, if we were trying to lower the impact on people in more need, it would cost far more money to do that. Is basically just to measure need and all this other stuff and this, and you kept the rate. We, you've all kept the rate at a, a way, something that's doable. So, did you want to speak to that, Rick, or, or not?
I think this is just really on the, the, the fact that we're doing bonds and the community's behind it, the rate study. We've made some organization, slight organizational tweaks, I'm really an incrementalist. We're only asking for the things that we think are necessary to move forward and have long-term success. The team has done an outstanding job with what they've had. I want to commend those obviously that were here before, all of them, for teeing that up. And with those tweaks, we think we're going to be ready for the future, including additional development. But manageable development and that it's going to be, you know, you're talking about stuff that's going to be, in my mind, needs to be good for 30, 40, 50 years, not flash in the pan. You know, a strip shopping center opens and then five years later, it's, it's half, half-empty or... So, but we wouldn't be able to do this without the confidence that y'all have and the support over this last year. And staff has worked really hard and, and I give all the credit to, to them and, and doing it and the team.
Thank y'all, thank, thank every one of you. So I am going to read the resolution from the CNAC committee. Thank you, Mr. Garrett, appreciate that. And Todd, thank you, even though you didn't have to get up and say anything, we really appreciate you. And BD, we know that you're out there working so hard, we really appreciate you too. So, so the capital needs, is that okay for me to read this? The Capital Needs Advisory Committee received and reviewed the presentation by NewGen Strategies and Solutions and accept the validity of the presentations and its findings and recommend the city council to approve. And they just voted on this today, so I'm reading their recommendation.
I make a motion that we accept the, the Capital Needs Advisory Committee's recommendation and that we approve the presentations as, as presented and accept the validity therein.
And, and approve the rate study?
So, that was the discussion that CNAC had, was that the rate study is not in its complete form, is that correct?
That is correct, because we're still working on your solid waste component, which was a part of the original scope. Correct, but the, the, I know, I know, sorry about that. That is correct, so one of the contingent, one of the people in the CNAC group wanted a study, a narrative. And we provided a lot of schedules, a presentation, but there wasn't a narrative. The narrative as, as written in the RFP and as discussed with Pam Kerbo when we did it, is a succinct letter report. So I do owe you some words to go with the numbers. And so I think there was a question of, when are we going to get the report? As we've been working up to the end of your budget with staff, we haven't finished a narrative. So I think you're accepting the presentation and findings, which will inform your 25 rate. And between now and December 31st, it's my charge through our amended agreement to bring back completed study elements, which are a letter report codifying, if you will, administratively documenting all the numbers here and putting a little letter to it plus schedules. And then additionally finishing, to finish the study, which was our original scope, which includes your solid waste rates. And so that effort was delayed and we, we purpose to finish that by the end of this calendar year. So CNAC said, let's approve the presentation and water and wastewater elements, but not call it the study. There was a nuance to that discussion.
Okay, and now I'm, I'm out of order here because we have a motion on the floor. But if, if you would mind holding your motion until we find out if, what motions we really need to mean. Do you mind Chad, holding your motion for a minute, or do I?
I'll withdraw it for the time being.
Okay, thank you so much, okay, so we, we need to know what we need to do.
So what I would, just like an audit, ultimately you'll accept their, their findings. So what I would almost suggest in this case, that you've, you accept the find, the, the presentation of the general findings pending the final report and at a later date, obviously. Not only would, would y'all come back and formally accept the report, then you would actually go back and separately set, go through the process of setting the rates, which will be a different, a different item altogether.
So you're suggesting a conditional approval of, or would?
This would, and then Todd will correct me if, if that is.
How does that impact our budget?
So our budget, this is, so you will then go ahead and, so you'd accept the general findings of, of this and the recommendation to CNAC. And then with the next action you're going to take on the budget, that will, that will set the rate.
Thanks Todd.
Right, I think we have a general consensus of what we need to do from council. So next week, when we have the tax rate hearing and, and you approve the budget, the budget already includes the rate increases in it. So once the budget's approved, hopefully that same day, you'll be asked to approve an ordinance which changes our water and sewer rates.
That's what I was going to say, yeah. So it's actually going to be.
Everything will be effective for October 1st. Because that's what's in the budget.
Okay, so what motion, do we, do we need to approve the rate study or not approve the rate study?
It's like the city manager said, every year when you get an audit report, there's not really an action that comes with that, you're just accepting the report.
Okay, thank you.
Matthew does, that's across the state, do you know what other councils do?
So, thank you, so unlike an audit, which is an obligation of a community, you don't have to engage us because you haven't for some time, right? So there's nothing that says you must have a study to change your rates. You are the decision-making body on rates, you're the authority. I think the, the nuance for one member and only one member of CNAC was that she wanted some narrative. And I appreciate that and, and our scope says we'll provide a narrative. I'm not going to effectively not give you a narrative if you accept this as the study or accept this as the water and wastewater results. So I don't think the formal action needs to be anything special because I don't think that there's a mandate on you to, A, have a study or B, accept what I do. I think the, the bigger action, as Todd referred to, is when you get to budget, setting the rates that meet the ends of the expenses you've put in your budget.
Okay.
And I've gone to many clients that I don't deliver a report. I deliver a message, I work with them every year. I say, hey, I'm quasi-staff from down the hall, but in Dallas. And I come out every once in a while, we talk about rates and then the budget team implements. So, so in my opinion, a little bit of semantics as it went to CNAC because they thought they were approving some formal document, like a master plan that's going to guide decisions for years to come. This is a plan and it's going to adjust every year, presumably as you have new budgets and new rates, so. I don't have the right wording for that because it's wordy.
Do we even really need an, an action?
No, it's not an action.
Then let's, let's not take, we're going to bring that with the budget next week. We have a consensus that we're good with that, let's take no action.
Okay, well, taking no action on this particular item, but appreciating everybody's thoughts.
Absolutely.
That concludes today's meeting and thank you for coming and God bless the great city of Nacogdoches.